I'd like to call the Monday, July 14, 2014 regular meeting of the Eugene Planning Commission to order. As is our custom, we reserve a few minutes at the beginning of each meeting for public comment and since there's no one in the audience, I'm assuming no one wants to comment. So we'll move past that and add an agenda item to welcome Commissioner Taylor. Thank you for joining us and we're glad to have you onboard. Look forward to many years of service on this commission. So anyway, welcome. And so with that then, we'll move on, I think, to the second agenda item, which is the South Willamette Special Area Zone. And Robin, you have, it looks like, two PowerPoints for us, Flexibility and Incentives and the Design Standards. And you've told me they're really not that long, so what I think I'd like to do is have him just go through both presentations. We'll keep track of any questions or notes and we'll address those when he's finished. Does that sound like a plan?
Sounds good to me.
All right.
Bill?
Yes.
I'm sorry, I'm not sure when to bring this up, but I didn't know that it went exactly till 1:30, so would it be all right today if I left at 1:25?
Oh, yes, that would be fine. And we will, I'll actually try and wrap this up by 1:25.
Okay.
But yeah, thank you for the heads up.
Yeah, thank you.
All right. Well, this is meeting number five to talk about the South Willamette Design Code. And we've been working our way through various concepts of that code. Just a reminder to anybody watching, we're not looking at the code itself yet. These are concepts, but they're pretty detailed concepts, so when the code itself comes around for us to take a look at, well, hopefully it'll be pretty familiar. So we spent quite a bit of time on transitions. Today, we have two topic areas. Just kind of recalling that we had about half a dozen topic areas and we polled the commission to see which ones were your top priorities. And top priorities came out as transitions and then we wanted to look at design review, which that conversation isn't quite ripe yet, so we're kind of putting that one off. And then the next two were flexibility and incentives and this idea of design standards, sort of raising the bar on the quality of design for buildings in the new district. I just also want to point out today that with me is Jennifer Knapp and she's been part of this project for a long time. She's been working with us for three years?
Three and a half.
Three and a half, okay. So she also knows a tremendous amount about the work and is here to help answer questions. And her specific topic is the single-family options, and I know we're not talking about that specifically today, but as questions come up, she's just here to help out with that too. So I wanted to make sure to introduce her. So moving right along, let's start off with flexibility and incentives. The idea here broadly behind the concept of flexibility and incentives is that we've heard from the development community pretty clearly that, as we've talked about many times here at the commission, the market is not really ready for redevelopment almost anywhere in the city except for very specific kinds of development. And one of the challenges is especially with redevelopment, that on a site-by-site basis, there can be a lot of complexity, a lot of different challenges, and it's also, in some cases, difficult to do what's needed to do to make a project work. So some amount of flexibility is really important for that, to make this kind of redevelopment fly, to meet our community's goals. So we are experimenting with how to build some of that into the code. These are some ideas for that. At the same time, when we talk about incentives, we're talking about code-based incentives. So if, for example, we want to create additional open space for the community, well, how can we get that? By offering something else that might balance that in the equation on a particular development project. So that's what this is all about. I think we also are going to be talking a little bit about parking here. And parking is extremely important and also tied in with not just sort of looking at parking by itself, but also what that means for a larger development project and what it means in particular for Willamette Street, and I'll get into that. So key topics that we'll cover in flexibility and incentives are building height, open space, and parking. Again, these are all, these are images from the South Willamette Concept Plan. We covered these topics in quite a bit of detail over the couple of years that we spent working extensively with the community to develop the concept plan. So it's nothing new. This is just how it's manifested here in the proposed code. So building height, this is the building height regulating plan that we've seen a couple of times before. And obviously, many of the transitions are indicated in that, but the building heights have various standards, three stories, seven stories, et cetera. We have some diagrams that explain these in more detail for the code that we'll be looking at later on. But suffice it to say that for now, we're looking at, even though we have, for example, a height limitation of five stories, we're saying, and this is something that's been recommended in some of the national literature and done other places around the country, to have some limited amount of flexibility within that height. In this case, up to 15% of the site to add up to one story of additional height. And that one story could be there for things like access to the roof. It could be any kind of structures. It could be for equipment, clock tower. It could be a lot of different things. And what it does is introduce some flexibility and variability for design as well. The transition areas and the step backs would be excluded from that additional bonus. So there wouldn't be any concern about being able to add an extra height on a property line if you're next to the R1 or the SFO zone. Also, in the step backs along the streets, which you can see here in this little model, at three stories, it would not be allowed within that step back. Open space. So what we're looking at here is providing kind of an incentive bonus for providing public or semi-public open space, and that's would basically be defined as something that is accessible by the public and serves the, if it was semi-public, it would serve the uses in the building, for example, if there were retail spaces adjacent to that. A semi-public space may be owned privately, but it would be open for people to walk in and access the shops and whatnot. Public open space clearly would be either dedicated and owned and managed by the public as in the city agency. So the idea here is as the amount of public and semi-public open space over and above the basic standards increases, and it would have to be adjacent to a public street, the ability to provide additional height on the building also increases. So in this case, if you add 600 square feet of open space, or 5% of the site, you get one story on 30% of the building, or 30% of the site. This one, as, so these just basically show you that as that open space increases, you also have a little bite taken out of the size of the building. So you go from that to this, you know, you have a smaller footprint opportunity for the building. You have the ability to put that square footage in height instead. So 1,500 square feet or 15% of the site would be equal to one story on the entire site, allowable building space the entire site. And then finally, for 3,000 square feet or 25% of the site, you could have one story and 100% of the site and additional one story over 50% of the site. I'm sorry?
That would be how you get to seven stories.
Yes, so this, yeah, in this particular example, you could get to seven stories.
Because on the map, we show an area where there are seven stories.
No, this would be a five-story to seven, right?
Yeah.
This is a five to seven, so where you're showing five, this is possible where the fives are shown.
Correct.
Seven would happen.
Seven could go to...
Could we maybe hold our questions until Robin's done?
I'm sorry.
It's okay.
Yeah, it's a good clarification, though. That is, that's the intent here, is that these would be in addition to the number of stories that are allowed for that area. So that explains the open space strategy. We've had a little bit of feedback and on the 28th, John Raul will be here to talk to you, excuse me, about the results of the AIA test drive of the draft code. And they have some thoughts to share, I think, on a variety of the proposed, the conceptual standards that we'll be talking about here today. But in this one, they brought up that it's actually challenging in some cases to do one story over part of a building site because you have to have two points of ingress and egress, and that can be challenging from a floor plan standpoint. Finally, in terms of open space incentives, this proposal is to, if a development provides an additional 200 feet of open space, and this again would be adjacent to a public street, you could, the development would be allowed to reduce its parking requirement by one space. So that's actually square foot for square foot, roughly equivalent. And the drawing below there from Richmond, Virginia, actually shows that a fairly small amount of open space can make a big difference in terms of the pedestrian environment and how people relate to a building in the street. That's actually part of a trend that's been happening for the last, I don't know, five years or so, might have started in the Bay Area, where they temporarily convert a parking space to a little parklet and they put benches out there and pull in some plants and see what happens, and people use the space very differently. And so this is just acknowledging that the better the pedestrian environment, the more walkable it is, the less potential need there may be for parking within the district. So looking at parking itself, the draft proposal would be to require three-quarters of a space of parking per dwelling unit as a minimum. And I know that we had a conversation about this a while back. We kind of somewhat prematurely, I guess, had a, talked about parking. And I know that there was a straw poll in the commission to require parking by bedroom versus by unit. So that's something that we can address in our conversation. I'm just putting up here what the original recommendation was. For commercial, it was one space per 660 gross square floor area. And the idea here would be that there would be additional reductions beyond that. Currently, in our nodal development overlay zone, we have half a parking space per dwelling unit for residential. So this is actually more than our current N D overlay. But the idea would be that you can get additional reductions, for example, for open spaces I just mentioned. If you're close to a frequent transit stop, if you provide shared parking, that's actually, technically, that would be off-site parking on someone else's lot that they're not using. Shared parking, in another way, would also be shared within the same development site between uses. You could have time flex parking for different uses, that needed parking different times a day. And also providing car sharing. So if you have a car sharing program and a shared car parked on the site and available to residents and other folks, that could count. Or if there was a car parked on a nearby site, that would count, but at a lesser amount. So these are some of the ideas we're floating out there for parking. I've also been having conversations with Jeff Petrie, our parking manager, all throughout the concept planning process, and we know that parking is going to be a concern, particularly for the neighborhoods nearby. If we reduce parking, the concern is obviously that there would be parking out in the neighborhoods and there would be spillover. At the same time, I think it's important to place the parking question in the context of how we're looking at Willamette Street. And what we've said, and I'll just kind of explain this right now, I don't have a lot of visuals to go with this, but we can come back around if we need to. The idea is that when we had a conversation about how to create a good pedestrian realm on South Willamette Street, it's clear that there just wasn't enough room to do that. And so we had a conversation with the property owners along the street and business owners about, well, what does it look like to acquire additional right-of-way over time to make room for that additional pedestrian realm? And one of the big questions that came up was, well, how does that affect the development potential of properties along Willamette Street? If we're dedicating an additional 15 feet of right-of-way, for example, for that pedestrian realm, doesn't that reduce my ability to do development on my site? So we studied that question and we looked at actual development sites. We worked with three different property owners in the district. The True Value Hardware Store, we worked with Eugene Coin and Jewelry, which is a very small site. And then we also worked with Turtle's Property on 27th and Willamette. And turns out that according to our current code, the biggest limiting factor to what you can develop on a site is parking. And that especially if you're limited to surface parking and given the economics of the district, it's most likely that you would be, at least for some amount of time. So dedicating an additional 15 feet of right-of-way would actually not affect your building potential very much at all, given the current parking requirements, because you simply can't build the density into the site and fit all the parking that you need to support that on However, because we're doing a code update at the same time, we have the ability to adjust some of those parking requirements. So if there is some amount of impact to the development, which it's very small, by reducing the parking requirements for developments at least along Willamette Street, you provide significantly greater potential, if the market allows that, to provide more square footage. And what we found was 150 roughly to 250% greater square footage for a building if we reduce the parking by 50% over current standards, which would be the equivalent of the current nodal development overlay. So what that means is, when we talk about parking, and that seemed to resonate with property owners, they're like, well, okay, so I get more flexibility in the code, but we give something up for a better pedestrian realm. And we talked a lot about the value of the pedestrian realm to future businesses and the future success of the district, and I think that resonated to some extent. But the value of that flexibility in the parking was, I think, pretty important to that, to that equation. So something to keep in mind. Let's see here. Okay, so that's it for the flexibility and incentives. Moving on to design standards, the concept here is that the community would like to see, like to have greater confidence that what gets built in the district and the community in general is going to be of higher quality and make a contribution to the community to some extent. And of course, we're limited in our ability to, we can't guarantee good design through code. We know that, that's clear. But what we can do is set basic standards and some basic expectations about what that is and provide some options. So that's the gist of this section here. And a lot of these are, I'll just say that they're focused on creating a pedestrian environment that is, that's friendly, that's accessible, that's safe. These are standards that are used, again, all across the country to great success. And they don't dictate the style or the color, and they don't get into that sort of detail about the building. What they do is look at specific characteristics of the form of the building and how it relates to the street, and especially the first two stories of design. So looking at building frontage, we have a basic requirement that the buildings do front the street. There's no parking required between, or no parking allowed between the building and the street. And that's the same as what the current code allows. That'll be continued. So 60% of the frontage facing streets would have to have building frontage on it, and there would be a variable setback within that area. Up to 50% of that frontage could be set back anywhere from zero to 15 feet to create entryways, semi-public space, public space, what have you. For, that would be for mixed-use, any kind of mixed-use building, commercial buildings. For residential-only buildings, the recommendation would be to have a setback of five to 10 feet to provide a little bit of space for those residential uses. And that area in between could be pedestrian improvements, it could be landscaping, it could be other amenities serving residents, or some kind of a buffer. Entrances, there is, would be a proposed requirement to have a main entrance facing public street. This is fairly standard for any kind of areas like this. The idea in an area for a mixed-use in what we're calling the active retail overlay, so these would be portions of the street, where we're looking at having active retail use as a desirable quality along that street. It wouldn't be required in the whole district, just along certain areas. And within these areas, we're looking at a greater frequency of entrances along those streets to create that active retail frontage. And in this case, it would be one entrance every 40 linear feet of building frontage, as the illustration suggests. Within the apartment condo Row House Character Subdistrict, which we've talked about before, essentially, these can be apartments, condominiums, but they would look, in terms of their frontage, more like they would have the rhythm of row houses. So they would really be highly oriented to the street. The idea is to activate that street and also serve as a bit more of a transition towards more residential areas. The idea here is one of the characteristics of a row house is that you have fairly frequent entrances. In this one, you'd have one entrance every 25 feet along those streets. They could be entrances to multiple units. They wouldn't have to be to single units, but they could be. And entrances themselves, and this is particular, specific to the mixed-use subdistrict, would require at least two of a variety of design features, either transom windows, recessed entrances, some kind of architectural treatment, special trim or casing, illumination within a certain distance. So this happens to be the entrance to the Center Court Building, and you can see that virtually all of these characteristics are present in a good building entrance. And what we would do is require that at least some of them be present. Weather protection, required full width of entrances, depth of four feet, and looking at, in the active retail subdistrict, at least half of the ground floor windows facing the street would have to have some kind of weather protection. So you'd have some consistency along that street as a pedestrian for shade or protection from rain. Transparency is very important, particularly on the ground floor in active pedestrian areas. The idea is to be able to see in and see out at the same time. In general, the standard we're looking at, the diagram here shows a fairly crude example, just to give you an idea of what some of those basic area requirements would be. 40% of the wall length would have to be glazing, at least eight feet high, and at least 30-inch minimum sill height. So you wouldn't have just really high windows or really low windows or something that was just kind of oddball. And 25% of the wall area would be the requirement for coverage. We heard some feedback from the architectural community, the design folks, saying that, well, for residential uses, this might be a bit of a challenge. You need some way to describe or to define that private space from the public space. So you might have a lesser requirement, you might have different requirements for transparency, you might have operable louvers, shutters, grade change, that sort of thing. We've also heard about spandrel glass and that this is used more and more, I think, for architectural treatments and building facades. We'd be looking at visible light transmission for a certain amount of that frontage. The example there on the right-hand side shows extremely dark glass, you can't see in or out, does not obviously provide the kind of transparency and connection that we're looking for. So we'd have to add in some kind of a standard, for example, 60% V L T or something along those lines. And these can be measured and inspected as well. So building articulation, this gets into the form of the building. The idea with building articulation is try to eliminate large mass of building that can sometimes be imposing and not compatible with kind of the human scale, particularly along an active street. So the idea here would be to have at least a minimum of an 18-inch offset for walls greater than 75 feet in length. This example shows pretty much the worst you could do under that, under that requirement. There's a couple of examples here that show different applications of that. This would be an 18-inch offset that also meets that standard. The idea would be that the articulation would have to extend at least two-thirds of the building height, or at least two-thirds of the stories. So you'd have a little more design flexibility for how to do that. Here's another example of a building form that would meet that standard. Minimum 20% of the facade area and articulation extending at least two-thirds of the building height. Again, lots of ways to apply that. For the mixed-use, active retail, and also the apartment condo subdistricts, we'd be looking at a 40-foot maximum wall length before the articulation be required. So you're looking at actually creating a little bit more fine-grained texture in that building facade. And for the apartment condo Row House Character Subdistrict, again, this is one of the two qualities that seem to distinguish the row house building from other kinds of buildings. There's an example in the lower left that would actually meet the standard just fine. The idea would be to have 18 inches of articulation for every 25 feet of wall length. And in general, the building articulation would require three of list of options there, design elements. Either, and I think the trees and shrubs may go off the list, but I'm not sure. In any case, you could have an inset corner, as in this example here. You could have some kind of a tower, bay windows, projections, any kind of revealing of visible structure like pilasters, piers, beams, that sort of thing, that give that building a little bit of relief and texture, especially at that lower two stories. So here's another piece of building articulation that appears pretty frequently around the country in areas where there's a focus on design. And this has to do with what we're calling, I guess this would be, I always get confused if it's vertical or horizontal. In any case, it's like the layer cake, you know, the idea of the base, middle, and top. And this is a fairly traditional architectural concept. However, what it does is, especially from a pedestrian standpoint, differentiate that ground floor and also break up the building mass and make it more human scale. Both of these examples are local. The Tate is on the left, the Aurora Building is on the right. They both meet the articulation standards that we'd be proposing. If you're looking at shorter buildings, two- or three-story buildings, the articulation, you wouldn't have to have the base, middle, and top, of course, because that might not work. From a design standpoint, at least you'd have to have a base and a top for a three-story building. No requirements for this for anything that's one or two stories. Both of these are also, again, local examples, Broadway Place and the Stellar Apartments. They approach the, they approach it differently. Both are well-designed and both would meet the standards. And this is the idea here, is that for the base, middle, and top, you would have a list of design features and the designer would be allowed to select from the list which features are most doable or fit best with the design they're proposing. And again, we've had some feedback from the folks at AIA that say, well, if you're serious about doing this, then you'd better not have some really low-hanging fruit, like you shouldn't just be able to do trim, or you shouldn't just be able to do something really simple because some developers might take that, it might not actually have enough of an impact on the building to do what you're trying to do. So this sort of, some of the feedback was if you're going to do it, you should really do it. And then other folks are concerned about having the standard at all because they feel like it's too limiting from a design standpoint. So that's essentially the needle we're trying to thread. Last item here, I believe, is building materials. So a lot of concern, I think, has come to the forefront, especially around capstone. Folks who went out there and looked at that project saw the rigid foam insulation along the foundation and saw the, just the thin, flimsy materials on the exterior of that building, not meeting the standards for what people expected, especially because the proposal originally showed a brick on the first floor of the building, which would have been a lot better. So the idea of regulating building materials is pretty controversial. I think it's difficult because building materials are continually changing. The technology is changing. There's also economic questions and inexpensive materials are not always bad materials. On the other hand, some of them really are. So we have the ability to, in the code, exclude certain materials and/or and/or require certain other materials. In this case, we're looking at metal cladding, some kind of masonry, concrete, finished wood, certain kinds of stucco, that sort of thing, as being materials... stucco, that sort of thing, as being materials that would be allowed or desired on the, especially on the first two floors of the building. And things that you wouldn't want necessarily is things like ephes, it's kind of a really, really lightweight, kind of spongy plaster material over foam, things like vinyl siding, you know, inexpensive plywood, those kinds of things. So that's, that's it for the flexibility incentives and design standards. And again, we'll have John Rau here on the 28th to share a little bit more about the AIA's perspective. This would be a great time to talk about thoughts or questions.
Thank you, Robin. I think what I'd like to do is go ahead and open it up for comments. I was originally thinking of maybe categorizing them, but I think, I think I might try letting us just hit any and all as we go through, rather than trying to shoehorn us into comments on just one or the other to start with. Because I think there's certainly always some overlap on, on some of the stuff. So with that, I'll open it up to questions and comments from anyone. I've got Commissioner Duncan, then Commissioner Baker, and then Taylor.
I just had a clarifying question.
Okay.
I'm wondering if it wouldn't be better that we talked about flexibility and incentives first, and then the other, rather than trying to do them all together?
Okay.
Just so we don't get so dispersed.
Okay.
Better the people make it differently.
Thumbs up? Okay. Then, fair enough. We'll start with flexibility and incentives, and then we'll move to the design standards. And I'll try and watch our time on this so that we have enough time for both. So flexibility and incentives, Commissioner Duncan.
First, a clarification. On one of your slides, actually on several of them, where you talk about open space, and you have six hundred feet, or five percent of the site, fifteen hundred, and so on, some of those, are one of those a maximum that you could have? I mean, because if you say fifteen, or five percent of a site, obviously, five percent of ten thousand's a lot less than five percent of fifty thousand. So
Right.
Is there a maximum of those? Or, I mean, I didn't quite understand how those two numbers fit together.
Let's see. Six hundred square feet, or five percent of the site, I think that would be at least, yeah.
So those would be minimum requirements?
That'd be minimum requirements, yeah. So, for example, if you had, you could have a very large site and provide six hundred square feet of open space, well, I suppose that is, that's an excellent question, because then would you?
Well, because then you get thirty percent, and
Right.
Thirty percent could be, again, a whole lot. So that's what I meant when I looked at those two. I wasn't sure if they were maxims and minimums, because they don't balance each other, at least
Right.
in general, if you look at that. So I think that needs to have some clarity.
Okay. I think off the top of my head, it would have to be whichever one is greater. So with a six hundred square feet or five percent, whichever one is greater. And on this particular example, this site here, those are roughly equal.
Right. But I could see where those could be way off, too. So anyways, I think it's important to have that clarification, which way you're talking about that. One of the things, when we talk about flexibility, and having to do actually with this type of thing, as we well know, surface parking lots are really the easiest thing in the world to build.
Mm-hmm.
And it would seem to me that if we took a look at, because I think parking's very important to development, because that's kind of the way the world is right now. Hopefully that changes as time goes on, but it still is. I was thinking, is it possible that somebody could get, along with what you've done, open space, but let's say they have embedded parking inside the first floor, say, or basement parking or something, if they could get some type of an allowance like this that says, hey, I'm going to embed, half of my first floor is going to be parking, give them the benefit of adding that extra floor up there? Because again, they're trying to generate more income from the building, and that then offsets the parking inside the building. So you, you know, if you just embed it, you don't give them a, kind of that carrot to get more income. They can't afford to embed necessarily. So it might be that you could embed inside and get a, get sort of this carrot idea where you can add some more square footage on your building top and so on, which then alleviates some of that parking and takes away the idea of only surface parking on that.
Mm-hmm.
The other thing dawned on me is, as you talked about, sort of this dedication of right-of-way and everything. Over time, if we see some minimal development occur, particularly in the beginning, maybe you allow that building to be set back so that you could ultimately gain additional right-of-way, or in fact, gain the right-of-way, but allow sort of, I'm going to call it park-it, parking you, park, try.
Parking?
Yeah, thank you. Sort of where I still get to control it, but now I'm allowing you to give me sort of parallel off the street.
Mm-hmm.
But it's kind of mine, so I can control it. I don't know how you could control it exactly. But see what I'm saying is, I'm willing to dedicate it to you now, but I don't want everybody to benefit. I want to be able to benefit from that parking, and it's parallel. So over time, as you dedicate more and more and more, it becomes freed up, and, you know, you could figure out a matrix on how it frees up or whatever. But it seems to me that might help on redevelopment to get a little bit of this parking on the street, but it's got to still benefit that property owner, because it shouldn't benefit everybody to start with, because that property owner's giving it up early on. Makes sense?
That makes absolute sense, actually, because that's, that's very, very close to the proposal
Okay.
that we'll be making, and that we've talked about with the property owners, is they've got to have an option to do that when you redevelop your building.
And you might also think about, if they do that, that again, you get some benefit from your parking requirement. And the two might be tied together, because if I give you my fifteen feet, I probably going to end up with parallel parking on the street, where if that was actually on my site of mine, I got diagonal or something like that. So I might only get, say, three parking places versus the six I could have. But there may be a way to, again, build a matrix that says, if I'm willing to dedicate it, I get to use it. I only get three. I get a benefit of six off my requirement on site.
That makes a lot of sense. And when we come back and talk about Willamette Street and our, our street design standards, we can get into the detail of what that would look like. That's, yeah, great idea.
Commissioner Baker.
Yeah, a couple of things. I wanted to
Be sure and speak into the mic.
Sorry. I wanted to follow up on Commissioner Duncan. I, I agree. I think, I think it would be better if it was worded as, it's a, the open space, any sort of building height flexibility is, I mean, the open space trade-off, at least, is a percent with a minimum required to qualify for it. That would be an easier way to categorize it. And I'm assuming that these flexibility incentives are essentially for the commercial, multi-use stuff on Willamette, too. Is that what we're talking about?
You're talking about these standards here?
Yeah. These, no, these, this flexibility incentives, this is not being applied to the R1, the single-family options, or the rowhouse zones.
No, thank you. Actually, that's a really good clarification. What, both the flexibility incentives and design standards are really oriented towards the mixed-use and apartment condo subdistricts.
Right. I just wanted to make that clarification, just because it wasn't ever stated.
Good one. Thank you.
The, the other, my other concern is, trading, trading open space for parking, I, I have no problem trading retail parking for open space. I do have a problem trading residential parking. Because the problem with residential parking, parking is, people store their cars for extended periods of time. My neighborhood is a good example. You try to come into my neighborhood on a weekend evening, you can't find a parking place. You know, a friend coming over for dinner can't do that. So, and so what happens is, if you, if the, if there's not adequate parking in these multifamily complexes, gets pushed out. Okay. So that means the most concern is the parts of this district that are, that are on the edge, right? Not so much on Willamette Street. But, you know, you have a situation developed, and a good example is employees in this building that park out past Fifteenth, where the parking restrictions stop. So they walk, you know, they walk six or seven blocks to store their car. And you could expect that that could happen if there's not adequate parking for the apartment units, particularly if they're multi-bedroom apartment units, and we're only required to provide a half a space, or three-quarters of a space for apartment unit. When you, when you go beyond two bedrooms, and you have three or four-bedroom units, and it's not that people will use their cars to do daily items, but they will have a car to do, go to the airport, go to the coast, go to the mountains. There's a reason that, you know, you know, my neighborhood has lots of cars parked illegally. So I don't think it makes sense to try to trade off residential parking for open space. And I have the same problem with changing, reducing the parking requirements for residential. For commercial, I mean, even though Turtles will be very busy at night, it's not every night of the week that, you know, your, your street is full of cars, and you can't have a friend over because there's no parking. Or you can't, you know, if someone comes to repair something at your place, you're living in one of these, you know, adjacent residential districts, and now they can't find a parking place for their, you know, the plumber, or the electrician, or whoever, whoever's coming to do something there. And so what we end up, and what we end up doing is, then we have to put a parking district in the residential area, and that's very inconvenient for the, for the residents. Because then, anytime you need to have anything longer than a two-hour parking permit, you have to go get a permit. The city's made it more difficult for that, because just the way it's more convenient for them to go through an agent, you know, third party. You know, you can't have a friend come over or visit from out of town. There's no place for them to park. You actually have to get a parking permit for them, for them to stay more than the two hours. So that's why I'm very reluctant to give reduction for residential parking, because cars are stored for long periods of time. Retail parking, I don't have that problem. Someone's going to go and shop for a couple hours and go away. And even for businesses that might, may be evening and night use, it's not every night of the week it's going to be like that. So maybe Friday and Saturday would be busy at Turtles, but the rest of the week won't be crowded. And so if they do park into the neighborhood, and there's no parking restrictions in the evening anyways, in most of these zones, except at the stadium. So anyway, those are my concerns about reducing parking.
Carolyn, did you have a response?
I just had a follow-up question. I'm looking at the reductions up there, and I'm wondering if things like shared parking would be acceptable for residential? Sorry, thank you.
I have no problem with requiring parking, and it doesn't have to be on-site.
Okay.
I mean, we already allowed that in our, in our neighborhood, in our zone.
And what about some of the other ones? Like, there's time-flex parking and car-sharing? I'm just trying to drill in a little bit.
Well, I don't know what, I don't know what you mean, I don't know how time-flex parking works for, you know, I mean, let me give you
Well, I think, if I'm understanding it right, I'll jump in. Time-flex parking would be maybe a church next to an office building, where they have a shared parking lot that the office building uses during the week, the church uses on weekends, and then that way you don't have two parking lots that at some point in time are sitting empty, at least a day or two of the week. Is that what time-flex is?
Yeah.
Excuse me, that's correct.
And I, the example, I was, that's a very good example, would be a restaurant that meets in the evening, and there's a bank next to it that closes at five.
Yeah, exactly.
But that doesn't work for residential, because you're storing your car for an extended period of time. You might only use your car once a week, but, or maybe you use a car four days a week to get to work because of where you live, you know, and where you work. You know, then transit doesn't work for you. So the point is, you need to store your car for an extended period of time. And that's where the, the other proposals, aside from shared part, you know, in other words, if, if you provide the parking, it doesn't have to be on-site. It could be, you know, quarter of a mile, or whatever you want to use as some, you know, limitation, three or four blocks, or whatever. But at least it's required by code. Those are my concerns.
Okay. I have Commissioner Taylor, then myself, then Commissioner Mills, then Commissioner Borowski, so.
I just wanted to, I'm not going to actually reiterate. I actually have many similar observations, Rick, Duncan. I did want to ask a couple of questions.
Commissioner Taylor, if you could get right into the microphone.
Yeah, sorry. I did want to ask a couple of questions. And then, just because I don't want to necessarily make assumptions, because that's my first day. One, I'll start with the observations, is that I do recognize Eugene is in transition from, you know, moving towards a more dense city within the urban growth boundary. And you actually identified at the beginning, Robin, and that is trying to strike a balance between what's there now, and to entice developers to come in and redevelop an area. So a couple of the observations I have is, one, like Rick identified, a lot of developers still, parking is a big motivator. They need the parking. So having incentive to eliminate it, it's, I'm not sure you're going to get the open space that you want. And quite frankly, as a citizen, I would like to see open space, and I just don't think we are there yet to have that incentive actually be by, by many developers being taken for, taken advantage of. So I actually agree with Rick. I think incentivizing, also incentivizing the option to add parking, for instance, underground parking, you can add additional floors. So incentivize to have parking provided in a more creative way that is not surface parking. And that doesn't get to the open space necessarily, so maybe they can, anyways, I would explore that a little bit more. The other is open space for additional floors. I did want to mention that building code, I was curious how you got to the sixth story, as when that incentive started. Because actually, five stories might be a reasonable place to start, but you've done your homework. So I'm just curious, because oftentimes, one floor of commercial, then you can have a different construction type for four floors above that, that's five. So that incentive of the sixth, just making sure that as you're adding floors, understanding that that sixth might not actually be the place to incentivize, I would have it be the fifth. Because the fifth is where they're going to want to take, capitalize on that opportunity to go to the fifth floor. It's within that code allowance. You get to six, they're going to stop at five anyways. So it's not necessarily an incentive. So, and I, I would think that John would be talking about that a little bit in his overview. So just look closer at the building code, and where that incentive would actually be triggered. The others, I just wanted to, I love the parking incentives. I actually live in a similar neighborhood with impact to residences, with higher density residential. I actually disagree with Steve. I think that I would, I'm a proponent of alternative solutions. I also think that I would encourage, I would be great to, both for commercial and residential, to look at potential opportunities for some public parking structures, to actually have that be a way of subsidizing some of the impact that might be in the neighborhood, as well as contributing to more vitality for, or incentive for, commercial development. That's all I have for right now.
I have myself in the queue, and I guess my, I have three questions or comments. And the first one is on the incentives for additional stories. And it appears that, on the open space, where you have the one story on a hundred percent of the site, one additional story on fifty percent of the site, so in all of those incentives for stories, is it a two additional-story incentive limit? So if you're at five, the most you could ever get to is seven? Or if you're at four, the most you could get to is six? Or do those get cumulative? What I'm, what I'm concerned about is if they accumulate, and you start squeezing it down to where, and, you know, practicality, I know is going to control some of this, but if you start squeezing it down to where you get a smaller and smaller footprint, can you then end up going eight, or nine, or ten stories? Not that I think anybody necessarily would do that, but I guess I want to make sure we've got some checks and balances in there, that we don't have too much height incentive
Sure.
with that. I wasn't sure exactly how that was intended.
Well, right now, the intent is that you could only go an additional two stories, no matter what.
Okay. And that was the way I was kind of reading it, but I just wanted to make sure that was the intent also.
Mm-hmm.
Get those unintended consequences of
Yes, correct. Your assumption is correct.
Okay. And then the, the second question that I had is, actually kind of getting back to the, the parking on the, either the ground floor or underground on either the ground floor or underground. I think the idea, I was thinking of when Commissioner Duncan and even Commissioner Taylor were talking about some of that, the project at Eighth and Charnelton, can't remember the name of it, but where they have parking there, there's, some is semi-underground, and then there's, I think, another level there, and then the development on top of that, to make sure that at that street level, we have good pedestrian-friendly articulation, screening, those sorts of things. I know when I walk by there, it really isn't that noticeable that this is a parking structure. And as we develop these standards, that we make sure that we've got that covered, so you don't just have these, again, either blank walls or how that works with that whole transparency articulation issues. And then the third one was related to the open space and park, well, parking specifically. The open space allowed reduction. You have one space per 200 square feet, and is that also just one, I know in one of the earlier ones, it looked like that was just a one-off ability, but if you reduce by, or if you provide 400 square feet of open space, you can reduce two parking places, and is there a limit to that?
Currently, there's no cap on that. We haven't proposed one, but it seems reasonable.
I think I would encourage proposing a cap to that.
Anything specific?
No.
Okay.
Not at the moment. It's just, I haven't done the math yet. I think it might be maybe a percentage of the overall required parking, because obviously a larger development site, depending on how much you reduce that, so you have a maximum reduction of X percentage, maybe 10%, 20%, somewhere in there. And then the shared parking, meet the need within 1,000 square feet. Would that be something that would need to be in writing as a, like a deed restriction or something, so that it's documented?
So which one would have to be documented?
Shared parking.
Sure, yeah, yes.
Shared parking, actually, the time flex might even be a, one that you'd wanna do that to.
Yeah, in fact, the current code does require an agreement of some sort to do that, and we would definitely be continuing, anything that's contingent on somebody else doing something to make it work would have to be documented through an agreement.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Do you mind if I add something? So you can have an agreement, but if you meet code, for instance, if the code requirements are limited, you can actually have, oftentimes I'll have clients that have agreements that are outside of the city's requirements, 'cause they're meeting the minimum code, but we're still pursuing the opportunity for more parking, 'cause they're private agreements.
Okay. Okay. I have one else.
Commissioner, I have Commissioner Mills next.
Just a follow-up to that one.
Okay.
Allow as the zone changes to occur that the building can be adapted to that new agreement? 'Cause we got caught in a building we own. It went up and required more, and so we had to sign a document to get more off-site parking to meet code, and then it was reduced down. But because we were in that point between the two, we are still required to keep the more parking by agreement. So we actually exceed code now on a property we own, because we end up in between, so as code changes, say the district continues to develop, you don't require as much parking, allow those agreements to be adjusted to meet code at the time.
Okay. Commissioner Mills?
Yeah, I've got several comments here, I'll try to keep them brief. I guess I wanted to, first in general, speak in support of Commissioner Baker's comments regarding residential parking, and I have a question and a clarification on page three of the incentives. The display for parking, it says residential, .75 spaces per the minimum. What does that mean?
Uh, let's see.
Per residence?
Yes.
I suggest it needs to be by bedroom, okay? And we need to find out what that, come to an agreement about what that number is, to try to address the concerns where we might have more than two-bedroom units, which is a very distinct possibility.
Can I ask a clarifying question, though? So if the current proposal on the table is .75 spaces per dwelling unit, are you talking about, are you suggesting a requirement of .75 spaces per bedroom, or would you suggest that like .25 spaces per bedroom?
I would not agree to .25 spaces per bedroom, but I would suggest it needs to be something that we, that we come to an agreement on, but it needs to be per bedroom, not per dwelling. That's, that's my main point. I'm not suggesting what the number needs to be, but it needs to be keyed to bedrooms, not dwellings.
And that was actually something in our last, one of our last discussions, that we had a four to three, four to three poll, that we go bedroom rather than dwelling unit.
I'd like to emphasize, we need to go that way. I believe, we need to go that way. And I'm not telling you, or I'm not the most knowledgeable person at the table, certainly, so I'm not gonna say what the number should be, but I think it needs to be an agreeable number, agreement, a number that we can agree to in whatever manner. But it should be street, keyed to bedrooms, not to the residences. Secondly, I'm really, as I was listening to you speak, Robin, about the setback, the, for, to make the supplement more pedestrian-friendly, I kinda came to the conclusion, and I, and that we really have kind of, especially in this, in the transition period, which is gonna go on for decades, you have this conflict between trying to provide the pedestrian-friendly zone to make it and improve the whole sense of the street, which is very important, and how that's kind of running in conflict with the parking requirement. And I'm very excited to hear about the time flex parking and shared parking concepts, 'cause I believe that's a key tool, a key tool to help address that concern and get us through this transition where we can talk, where we can get businesses that are there now, in structures that are there now, to make a conversion and start providing a more pedestrian-friendly without a big renewal project. We can start improving that. If we have infrastructure, using the word infrastructure, shared parking, parking structure, whatever it is, that they say, okay, yeah, you're gonna lose six spaces here, but we're gonna make a provision somehow to get you four additional spaces someplace else, or five additional spaces, and they'll be shared. But to me, it's a, it's a, it's one of the key tools we could use to help us get through the transition. And I guess you guys, Robin, I know you have been at this table with me that much over the years, but one of my big bugaboos is always in the details of how do we transist from the, from the, from where we are now to the envision, and all the messy, unattractive things we go through in between. Because that's where we all end up living, in the interim. And so we're all, we're all invariably always in the interim. And so I'm always looking for tools to help improve that interim environment. And I really feel like we've got one here to help us, and we really need to. And I'm encouraging staff in the city to look for ways to view that, parking as infrastructure, for example, and provide this, use it aggressively as a tool to improve the streetscape.
I have Commissioner Borowski, and then Commissioner Baker.
Okay. I guess I got a couple of questions. The first one would be on open spaces. When you were, when you were discussing open space, public semi-public spaces, and then you showed some of your diagrams, you know, one of the diagrams showed seating for like a restaurant. Now, if you, if, would that be, if I had a restaurant on the ground floor and I had 600 square feet of outdoor dining, could that be considered public space? Because you mentioned that it's owned and controlled by the city, but yet there's, like downtown, there's, the city rents public space to restaurants for dining.
Yeah, so the difference between the way that we're looking at this for purposes of defining semi-public versus public open space, semi-public would still be, would still be owned by a private party.
Okay.
For example, if you were to do a development that had 600 square feet of open space next to a street, and that was where you had restaurant activities and a fountain or something, you still own that, you still control that. But what you're doing is you're inviting the public into that space for a particular purpose that has to do with the use of the building. That, that would be semi-public space. Because if you change your mind about it later, it's, you know, you still have the ability to do with that property what you want. Public open space would be, is, would be if you said, well, you know, we don't necessarily wanna own and manage this piece of property, we're gonna sell or give that 600 square feet to the city if they're willing and if they're interested. And they would develop that, manage that, build the infrastructure, and then could theoretically have an agreement with the adjacent property owner about having restaurants seating out there. So that's the difference.
But both of those qualify for the incentives?
They would.
Okay.
Yeah.
Then getting down into parking, I had a couple of questions about the incentives. One is the frequent transit. You get a 25% reduction if it's within 600 feet of a transit station. Does that mean a bus stop or, or an actual station? And if it is a bus stop, is there any property on Willamette Street that is not within 600 feet of a, of a transit stop?
Good question.
Yeah, good question. Well, within the district, there, there would be property that's, well, I have to, I may not, I should look before I speak on that.
I mean, there's the one in front of Wildos, there's the one in front of...
Yeah, it's probably mostly within 600 feet of a transit stop. The defining element here would be frequent transit service. So when we would write this into the code, we'd be talking about frequent transit service. And that would be defined as at least, I think, 15-minute service between the hours of, I don't know, you know, rush hour in the morning and rush hour in the evening. So it's often enough that people can...
Wouldn't be just a bus stop then.
No.
Inevitably get there. And so whether it's a station, like has all the amenities of a station, we could, we could define that as well. For now, and I think what most other codes do, like what Portland does, is I think they look at the frequency of the service that is provided from the station.
Well, I think that needs to be flushed a little bit. Especially, I mean, if it's 15 minutes, even EMX isn't hitting 15 minutes, EMX is hitting 20.
It's 10.
It was a 10?
Yeah.
But it's 20 in the evenings.
No, it's 15.
15, okay. But, and who knows where that's gonna go, but I think that that definitely needs to be flushed out. And, and what I'm getting to is, is the piggybacking of these incentives. Because, because, you know, I can see developers saying, okay, I'm 600 feet from a bus stop, I'll put three car shares in there. I will, I'll make a, you know, there's a church across the street, and pretty soon you're down to no parking. You know, because he's hit, he's checked all his bells by using the incentives. So I think that there needs to be some sort of, and I don't know what it is, because that's not my...
A minimum?
Well, I mean, it's just, it's just, if you're using, you know, you can't use more than three of these, or, I don't know what it is. But I'm concerned about the piggybacking of these incentives. I'm very concerned about the transit one. I mean, especially because it's such a short section, you know, it's 24th to 33rd, and if, and we are trying to make it, you know, a transit corridor. So to incentivize that, that's just basically giving everybody a 25% reduction as it gets built out. So, I, you know, I know that we wanna incentivize using public transport and using that as a thing, but that's almost giving somebody a freebie, 25%, and I'm concerned about that. The residential, again, you know, we dropped back, when we did Wildon Station, we dropped back, I think we were at half a, half a space for one there. You know, we're just starting to see our first build out down there, so it would be interesting to see, I would love to see what the, what the new one where the, where the River Ranch was and how they're, I mean, they're doing structured parking there to hit their numbers, you know? Be interesting to see how, and we've got a new development coming in at 15th and Orchard that will be also a, a new in that station. So it'd be interesting to see how they're hitting their numbers, for me, and, and see how it actually builds out once we've got a code that's written.
Yeah.
That's less than what, what is first other areas. So that's something I can...
Okay. And we're at 12:35, and I wanna, I've got five of us in the queue still, so I wanna make sure we leave enough time for the other topic, too. I have Commissioner Baker, then Duncan, then myself, then Taylor. So Commissioner Baker?
Okay, yeah, I'll try to keep it brief. I think it would make sense for the open space reduction to be limited to Willamette, because that's really where you want it the most. And so that would, that would, in a way, provide an incentive for people to develop on Willamette first, rather than on the side streets and elsewhere. I mean, it also, it restricts the issue about, you know, trading open space for parking spaces, you know, it's there where you need it most. And I agree with, I think it was, that the maximum reduction should be limited to some percent, no matter what. And the residential parking, what we adopted in university neighborhoods, and it's worked very well, developers seem to be comfortable with it, is actually, the residential parking requirement is one dwelling unit, one parking space for a dwelling unit, it's not .75, but you're automatically allowed in the city limits, a 3, a 25% reduction, so it comes down to 75. So the way it works in the, in the neighborhoods where we've seen a lot of multifamily development is that it's one parking space per unit for the first two bedrooms. And then after that, each bedroom requires an extra half a space, which in reality is .375 spaces, so it's like, you know, a third of the space. So, because of the 25% reduction. So, and again, for consistency, you know, it would make sense to consider the existing standard that you already have there and applying it to this other area, it's a similar situation where you're getting a lot of multifamily. The other thing is, in Portland, they, they pretty much, that incentive for transit is pretty much transit stations where there's rapid transit. And there's a reason for that. They wanna, again, incentivize development at those places, again. So that's the reason. It makes sense to develop those things first and then spread the development out from there. They wanna really make those nodes there. And I don't, I have to agree, I don't think you're gonna have, I mean, typically bus services every 30 minutes, and then in off-hours, it's an hour. So it's really not very frequent on Willamette. It's gonna be frequent on, you know, where LTD is running its Amazon, unless things change. Or maybe they swing in and do a station at 28th and Oak or something, you know? So those are my, those are my concerns. I'm, I'm fine with shared parking, we've had, we've had some revisions in how that's been done in our neighborhoods, based, in terms of making sure, making sure it's there, I think now they're using actually covenants, but there's a requirement that has to be signed, and there's a, you know, it's gotta be signed that it's a shared parking space or whatever in some way, so that it's clear. There's some requirements like that. So you might look at, see how it's been done in elsewhere in other districts to see how that's done. Thanks.
Commissioner Duncan?
Yeah, Robin, if you could go to your exhibit, the one that has 3,000 square feet or 25% associated with open space, I think it's one of the last one. The second bullet point says one story on 100% of site. I think you mean one story on 100% of the building? Because again, if you've got a 25% reduction in the building footprint, you can't build 100%, because that would be whatever, 1.3 stories or something like that.
Yeah, that's probably a better way to define it, because naturally, yeah, you can't develop 100% of the site anyway.
Well, if you're counting...
But that allowance would just apply there.
Yeah, if you, if all you're doing is counting it as a square footage, you could go up more than one story that way, so that's what I meant for clarity purposes.
Ah, yeah, that's good.
And actually, Commissioner Borowski brought up a point that I hadn't thought about, but if you talk about it either being public or semi-public, meaning that semi-public's still in private ownership, how do you stop some level of development in that open space somewhere in the future? I don't necessarily have the answer, but I think it needs to be taken into account for code, because what happens if I decide to build an enclosed kiosk in that space? Maybe I open it to the public, maybe I don't, maybe I turn it into a Verizon phone store or somebody's phone store, or, I mean, I... or somebody's phone store, or, I mean, I think there needs to be some clarity on how that needs to be used or defined.
Mm-hmm.
Secondly, I'd like to support Commissioner Taylor's comment about construction height, because certainly, four-story over podium is a whole lot cheaper to build construction-wise than if you go to a fifth floor, or, excuse me, the sixth floor, because then you start changing construction type, and it becomes very expensive, not only on that floor, but everything below it. So it may not be an incentive if you, if you only allow it to occur over the fifth floor. So, some thoughts there.
Okay.
The other thing that I didn't see in this incentive, and I think we've talked about it a couple of times before, is just the concept of an LID. That if the city really wants to incentivize these types of developments, or this kind of redevelopment of a district, I think the city needs to at least entertain the idea of creating some of the, maybe parking structures, or shared parking, or flex parkings, or whatever else we're gonna call them, with the idea they get paid back over time. Because that way, we can get more parking in here, which allows better density to be buildings within these districts. Because we can't just rely on, you know, either odd-street parking, or surface parking, or, as we all know, yeah, you can embed it, but embedded parking always is lim, you know, the amount of square footage required to embed parking is a lot more than surface parking, just because ingress egress and all the other parts. The other thing, and I think Commissioner Randall made this point, is you take a look at the parking structures downtown, the main thing you see of our parking structures on our main corridors is the drive-in, drive-out. And so I'd like to have some sort of thought about where those drives actually should occur. And of course, it's gotta also be reasonable that they're not put somewhere where you can't make your turns correctly, or it limits it, or whatever else. Recognize that in the building. Because again, if you don't have a corner site, you only probably have two locations. Maybe if you're lucky, you have an alley, or you have to have the front door.
Yeah, really good point. I think most, most codes for downtown and urban areas like this require some kind of a liner along that parking garage, at least on a certain amount of the frontage, facing the important streets.
Right. But again, how do you, how does it work if you're an interior lot with no alley?
Right, yeah. Okay.
Thanks.
I have myself and Commissioner Taylor, and then I think I'm gonna cut it off on this discussion and move us to the next one. My, my comment was just a suggestion as far as the overall parking. I know Commissioner Baker mentioned, I think, one parking place for the first bedroom and one half, or first two, and then a half or something beyond that. And I'm not sure, off the top of my head, what the requirements are in some of the other areas, in some of the other zones that we did, maybe Walnut Station. But I would suggest either something like that, or just a half-space per bedroom as at least a starting point on that discussion. But then also allow that that would either be onsite or through a shared parking agreement, so that if, if you did have a site where they wanted to develop without any parking, but they had a shared parking agreement for the required number of spaces within the 1,000 feet, you know, that perhaps that would be an allowed incentive for them to not have any parking onsite, provided they had a shared parking agreement. So just to throw that out as a, as an idea for some flexibility and everything. That was my only comment. So Commissioner Taylor?
Yeah, I feel the same way. I'm not sure, I like the idea of duplicating other code sections for consistency. I do, I do think we're going, I think, once again, multifamily is in transition, and I think some of the more conservative approach to parking for multifamily, especially as it's located closer and closer to the proximity of the University of Oregon, I mean, we have a really saturated market that's serving student housing. So I think we're gonna start seeing shifts. So if we have a really stringent minimum parking space for multifamily, I'm not sure it's going to be something that's gonna be valid as we move to the future, quite frankly. I think it's gonna be an excessive requirement for multifamily dwellings. So that's where I, I think that it's gonna be important to evaluate what seems, so if you have parking space per bedroom unit, when really maybe what you might be seeing is a startup family, where they have three bedrooms, and they only have one car. So I would like to not see us just have excessive parking minimums that aren't necessarily allowing some kind of realistic minimum, does that make sense, that's projecting more into the future. And the fact that we have so many multifamily and the student housing, I'm not sure Willamette, we're gonna see that kind of demand. I think it's going to be spread out more through the city in terms of student housing.
Okay. So I might suggest that we come back and unpack this issue a little bit more.
Yeah.
And bring back some alternatives, and maybe what some of the other zones have done, you know, because there's a number of different perspectives, and it feels like we want to get that all out on the table and figure out what's gonna be right for the district, so.
Yeah, great, Robin.
Thank you. And I'm also very interested in what the, what John Rowl's going to bring to us as far as some of the test drive experiences. And I know I wasn't able to participate in that, but I think it's a very valuable thing to do, so.
Right.
The last thing I just wanted to say is that I actually think open space is valid for all of the identified properties, the MU and apartment complexes, not just along Willamette. So I think those incentives are valid for the whole.
So let's move on to design standards, then. See that hand. Commissioner Duncan.
I think this is where I'm gonna interject on active retail. I told you I'd hold it, and I think this might be the spot. I have a real concern about the concept, and if I remember the Willamette plan, I was gonna grab it here, but it seems to me there was several blocks that sort of required retail first floor.
Mm-hmm.
And I have a real concern about that, because our city has never really figured out how much retail we need for a community, and yet we require it. I mean, we required it for the longest time on first-floor residential, and then we finally, after a lot of years, said, oh, maybe we don't need it, because we saw a lot of stuff. I have a real concern that if you require retail in a certain area, that that could be a restriction. I don't know that, but we don't know how much, we don't know how much retail you really need to support a community, particularly with the changing buying habits with a lot of online things and so on. So I caution about the requirement of retail. And I'll point to our downtown. We say, gee, we're doing real well, look at all the restaurants. But if you walk around downtown, how many offices are on first floors facing streets? How many different kinds of businesses that don't fit into the definition of retail are on our streets and our active pedestrian areas? So I'd be very cautious about talking about retail. Now, I understand what you're trying to do, but I think you could limit it to a point where it's, where you have some concern. Secondly, on, I think it's sort of your first slide on our page two, where you start talking about residential building setbacks, and you give them a little bit extra. Now, I'm gonna counter what I just said, and said I like the idea of setting back for residential. As an example, I walked down Olive Street, the capstone, which is right on the sidewalk, and I can't imagine why anybody would want to live in that first-floor residential unit where my bedroom window is one foot from the sidewalk. Can't imagine one to live there. Wouldn't ever. Saying that, I think that the residential buildings, if it's residential only, as you show in that first slide on page two, I think there ought to be an allowance for a small amount of commercial in that. And it could be minimal, but you allow the setback to allow residential possibly on that ground floor. But again, I'll point to the Tate and show that they have, you know, there's an architectural firm in there, there's an accountant in there. I mean, services the building to a certain extent. I don't think it's wrong to throw that little bit of mix into a residential, but you've still gotta allow the residential to sit back a little bit further. So I wouldn't say if it's residential only, you get to set back. I'd say if it's a percent of residential, or a percent on the ground floor of residential, you're allowed to have a small amount. And I'm not talking about thousands of feet, I'm talking about maybe a few hundreds of feet of some type of residential.
Would it be fair to say that the residential use that was located on the ground could be set back five to 10 feet?
Yeah, I think so.
That is? Is it? Okay.
500 square feet is allowed parking use.
Oh, it is? Okay. I mean, again, I would suggest that might be measured against the size of the building, or the size of the floor plate, or whatever it might be, so that, again, frontage or depths, or whatever else, but just some flexibility that allows that.
So just to clarify, it seems like there's two different questions. One is you can, according to the code, or you would be able to have a residential-only building in a mixed-use.
Right.
And it sounds like what you're saying is, well, if part of it's residential on the ground floor, and part of it's, I don't know, retail or office, you should be able to set that residential piece back five, five to 10 feet, to give them some space. Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, I mean, it wouldn't bother me, again, if we wanted that commercial up, that maybe that has to be sort of an articulation-type spot to get to the, to more of the commercial, where if I want to build that, and I want to put in a little coffee shop on the corner, or, you know, I've got the CPA that wants to have his office in that, or some type of use, that maybe that's moved forward. But allow the residential to always sit back a little bit, just to give one, either you get some type of vegetation screen on the first floor, or you've got a way to create security fencing, so that I, my windows aren't butted right against the right-of-way.
Sure, okay.
Because once it's butted against the right-of-way, everybody has the rights to be leaning against the wall.
Okay. And I think, just to clarify, what Jen was saying, that is in the, in the proposed apartment condo sub-district, there's an allowance to be able to have some kind of commercial use up to 500 square feet within that building.
Right.
Okay.
The other one that I would, and I'm not sure if it's changed downtown, but I believe that anytime you put a weather protection awning that encroaches into the right-of-way, you have to go to the city and request an encroachment document, or a revocable permit. But I think it has to be done on individual basis. It would seem to me that if we're gonna require setbacks that nearly approach the right-of-way, that that ought to be in the code to be granted automatically for any type of awning protection, or weather protections, so that I don't have to go ask permission from the city on my individual case.
So kind of a blanket revocable permit?
For that use.
Yeah, that's an interesting idea. We can talk about how that might work. I think part of the reason for the revocable permit is that if there was ever a need to do something or use something in that right-of-way, that the city would be able to address that particular property owner, and they would have signed an agreement that said, yeah.
And that would be fine, I think, in the document, that the revocable is just granted automatically.
Yeah.
And still be a revocable that could be taken if the city needed to for some reason, but not require the property owner to go through just another process. Again, we're talking about incentives a little bit, so don't require me to have to go through a special process to get that when you want me to have one.
Makes sense.
Commissioner Baker?
Yeah, I was wondering, I had some questions about the first slide on page two. It seems counterintuitive. We have a situation on, I'm talking now mainly about Willamette Street. We have a situation where we'd like to definitely increase the width of the apparent right-of-way or apparent public space, because it's, you know, we only have a narrow sidewalk strip, maximum of 10 feet, and, you know, that may not, doesn't appear to be likely to change. And also, there's a lot of intrusions in there now. There's power poles and things like that, and right now, there's, the URM has no incentive and no plans to underground those. It just seems like you might want to allow the setback to be up to 15 feet, just so that people could actually use it to create some public, you know, some, either private open, you know, private open space, or public open space. In other words, don't restrict, particularly on Willamette, at least, I would, I would start to think of some of these standards as, you have slightly different, maybe more flexibility on Willamette, because that's really where, I mean, right now, we'd like it everywhere, but right now, we know we need it on Willamette because of congestion and all these other things.
Yeah, and just, when we come around and talk about Willamette Street and the street standards, that kind of thing is exactly what we're thinking about doing. So I think it'll all become a lot more clear once we have the visuals, and once we have that whole conversation.
Okay, so the plan is you might actually increase that dimension on Willamette Street?
Yeah, we're looking at having, creating a special setback on Willamette Street to create the space to do that.
Okay, well, it might be good to note it, you know, in the future on this, just so we're aware of that. And then I have some questions about the last slide on that page. So the SSW multi-user AR, what's, I forget what this designation is. This is the multi-user app-
Active retail.
Active retail?
Yeah, mixed-use active retail?
Okay, right. My concern isn't so much for this, if it's, if it's active retail, but if it's, if it can be, if it's, this, this particular zone, does it require retail, or could be all multi-user? Multiple, you know, could be all apart, you know, residential.
I believe in the, so the active retail is basically a designation along certain street fronts.
Okay.
And along those certain street fronts, you would have to provide a retail use.
Okay, well, then I don't have so much of a problem. But even so, it seems like sometimes that might be a limitation. In other words, if the larger store went on the lower floor, I don't know how often they would want to have, in other words, those are their control points, you know, like, and it just seems like that might be somewhat restrictive, that dimension, you know, so you might want to talk with some people that do retail. I mean, if you did a half-a-block development, maybe you wouldn't want to have entrances that frequent in front of it. I think you, so that might be restrictive there. And I have the same, a slightly different perspective, but I have it on the first slide on page three. Even for row houses, it's sort of like, by saying, by limiting it to 25 rather than, say, 30, it's sort of like, we are designing the unit now. We're just saying essentially that we're gonna have, you know, one space wide with a corridor, so to speak, maybe a closet, you know, where, you're not, you're not giving architects, designers, much flexibility. You might have a slightly wider unit where you basically have two rooms wide instead of one. Because if the entrances literally have to be 25 feet apart, and then you subtract, you know, subtract walls, you're talking about units that are like 24 feet wide, or 23 feet wide, you know, sound insulation between the units and all that sort of stuff, double walls, assuming that's what you use. You know, you get to be a fairly narrow unit on the front. It just seems to me, I would be, I would suggest maybe a dimension more like 30 feet as a, as a, as a maximum, just to give designers more flexibility. So we aren't always designing a specific, you know, one-space-wide corridor sort of I feel fine about the other things, about weather protection. I think transparency is good, and it's good to make sure that we use visible light, you know, not light transmission, but visible light transmission, because that's what you're concerned about. You can still get solar glass that has a high visible light transmission, but it's somewhat reduced for solar heat gains. When we talk about your building articulation, and you mentioned it yourself, it seems like I would remove color, sort of, you've got down here in your tables, change of color slash finish, that seems to me one of those ones that someone just painted the building a little different color. That would be one of those examples about where, where, you know, where it's really not different, and all you did was paint the lower wall one color and the upper wall a different color. Unless you, because you already have a thing in there, a change of siding, well, that's a material change. So that's different than, you know, the color in the finish from gloss to a flat, you know, is that considered a finish change? So I would, I would suggest maybe removing that one from your list of articulation. Also, I, I know designers- Also, I know designers like flexibility in articulation, but if you want to have articulation mean something, some of these things you just have to decide can't be adjusted. In other words, if you've got some maximum dimension here, what is it, 75, I can't remember what the dimension is, is it 75 feet?
Yeah, yeah, for the mixed use.
Right. I mean, because we have examples, we have a code requirement now that has to be articulation 150 feet, and yet, we've had buildings go in and get an ARA for 190 feet of a flat wall in my neighborhood. Fortunately, they haven't been built yet, and maybe they never will, but they got a permit. So, some of these things, you decide what can be adjusted elsewhere, you know, with ARAs or whatever, what can't. I think that's an important consideration. So, things that are really important to you, you decide what that is. So, you know, maybe the percentage of windows could be adjusted with an ARA, but the transparency couldn't. In other words, make those kind of determinations. And the same thing with, you know, building frontage and entrances or whatever. That's my first crack.
I have myself, and then Commissioner Taylor, and then Commissioner Borowski. And first, I'd like to say kudos to the building articulation from the standpoint of base, middle, and top, and then with three-story only requiring two of those, just to get that differentiation. And I think that's actually something that, since we've already mentioned capstone, I think would have helped a lot with that project had it actually had a base, middle, and top. And I understand, I think, where Commissioner Baker is coming from on just color, and I think, I like the idea of color, if it's also combined with a change in either material or design, you know, if you're doing lap siding, you showed one example, well, yes, the stellar apartments, where that actually changes, it doesn't actually change material, per se, but it's a change in design, so you do have that distinct base, middle, and top. And I think that's even more critical than the color necessarily on that. So, I, like I say, kudos to that, and also, kudos to the building materials, as far as looking at some durable materials and some materials that are, have some variety to them, you know, I think, again, beyond color, I think that's a real good, good thing to do. I was, at first, a little concerned about the 18-inch articulation for some of the proposed standards for the minimum horizontal offset, but then I got to thinking with the Woolworth Building out here, that's probably even less than 18 inches, if any.
It is.
And yet, is still, I think, a very good streetscape there, as well as Broadway Commerce Center. And so, you know, while I'm a little concerned with 18 inches in articulation, and is that really enough, I think it might be okay. So, my initial concern maybe isn't quite as strong as it was. And then, my last comment is on the transparency for the mixed-use, where you have the 25% of wall area, is that 25% of the base, is what you're considering that? I mean, obviously, it's not the entire wall on a four- or five-story building. I'm assuming that would be 25% of that base.
First floor.
That first floor, base area.
Yeah, that's correct, and I believe above-
We should make sure we clarify that if that-
Yeah. Above the first floor, yeah, above the first floor, I think we'd be looking at reducing that requirement. You'd still want some transparency above the first floor, eyes on the street and all that.
Right.
But it wouldn't have to be 25%.
Right. Well, and I think the 25% really gets at that whole pedestrian-friendly concept, so you're not walking by either a blank wall or a wall that has painted glass that you can't see through, those sorts of things. So, I think the VLT is good, but I think maybe just clarifying that that is the base story or first floor. I think those were my comments. So, Commissioner Taylor?
I just wanted to ask, in some places, for instance, on the second page, first slide, for the residential, for instance, five to 10 foot setback, I did notice in this section, there was a lot of elimination between minimum and maximum, so it wasn't clear, I just wanted to bring that up, I'm not sure if that was my intention. So, five to 10, so that's a 10 maximum, minimum five?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. So, I just, I think it would be helpful to actually provide.
Yeah, well, when we get around to actually writing the language, we'll make that crystal clear. So, good point.
The other comment is, I wanted to just, for clarification purposes, are all these codes, are all these sections, can they go through design review or adjustment review?
The, well, I guess we haven't figured that out exactly. You know, Commissioner Baker brought up the point, what would be allowable for adjustment and what wouldn't. One alternative that we would be exploring is, well, rather than having the clear and objective standards, we would have a set of guidelines, and the guidelines would address virtually either point-for-point or the intent that the articulation or the blazing and whatnot is supposed to get at, but wouldn't have those limitations. I think that's probably a question to bring up again when we talk about our design review piece.
Great. That would actually help. For me, I think it's an added bonus to actually have that option, because I do find some of the requirements potentially too restrictive, that you're not necessarily going to get the flexibility of uses, or you might find that it's difficult to develop. For instance, I agree with, and I think it was Commissioner Duncan that said, I can't remember the two, or maybe Commissioner Banker, the two entrances, that requirement. What will happen, I know from doing this for many, many years, is that we have faux entrances. When we have a frontage entrance, actually, the tenants don't want a front entrance, so they put one there, but it's actually, if you noticed, I just recently drove by one, and I will not name the tenant, they have placed a transformer right in front of the corner entrance. It's not used, it's around the side where the parking is. So, there are unintended consequences if they're just meeting code, when functionally it might be one entrance. So, you know, some, a little bit more flexibility in looking at some of the other standards. Anyways. The other one is, I do like large commercial facilities, their exterior facade articulation and window section. I think it actually gets at, there's a little bit more flexibility, it's already in existing code, and I'm not saying duplicate it, and some of my concerns come with, for instance, transparency, and I guess I'd have to, want to look closer at exactly the lots that the transparency would be required, is, once again, let's say you have a really great tenant, but only a certain percentage, when you start to say how much can be transparent, if it's, for instance, a clinic, and they can't, you're then not allowing that diversity of use or development. And transparency, at least with my clients, it's a very big issue. So, we spend a lot of time providing spandrel glass. I think when you try to incorporate some of the other items, like articulation and what's included in it, which you have included on the list, you can still get a great aesthetic without actually having a transparent window. But there's a small percentage or a percentage that allows more flexibility. And just looking quickly at this, this transparency, you're going to limit some uses, definitely. The other is, I actually, I agree with Commissioner Randall, is I do color and finish, and maybe it's just saying color and finish and architectural variation, because different siding isn't necessary, because you could have, for instance, board and batten, and you change the color and you change the design of the board and batten, the siding's the same, but you're going to have a very different appearance just by changing the color, a potential finish, or just the pattern of the board and batten. So, I wouldn't totally exclude that. I agree with Commissioner Duncan about the revocable permit, and what I think would be great is just have it, I know that probably Public Works is going to require it because of what Carolyn brought up, but to actually have that burden be on the city so that it's prepared and facilitated by the city with the understanding that this is being allowed, and that it's just a part of the process of that particular permit, that you just sign it. Also, commercial, 500 square feet of commercial, not typically a viable square footage, just FYI, 1,200 square feet is usually kind of, 1,000 to 1,200 is more viable, but once again, I'm not sure what kind of commercial, your retail, you're looking for. So, but 500, you'll definitely have minimal desire for 500 square feet. And I, Commissioner Baker, I have the same concern about the dimension for the 25-feet row house, I think even 30 feet potentially is arbitrary, but I'm all, I'm fine, I like clear and objective standards. So, in some ways, some of these standards are just fine as long as there's an adjustment review or a design review, that as long as we're meeting the intent that we can, as design professionals, go through and demonstrate that our design is consistent with the intent. Yeah.
Mr. Borowski?
Couple of the things I wanted to say have been brought up, again, the two entrances for every 40 feet, you know, just security-wise, two entrances, if you've got a, if you've got a long thing, you need to control your accesses, so that needs to be looked into, whether there's another way to reach the objective that we want without actually making it difficult. The other, another one of the ones was as far as the transparency, and this goes back to, you know, if somebody's building a parking garage on the lower floors, do we want to have glass showing the cars, or is there a better way to work with that? I think that in Walnut, we did have some design standards for parking garages that might be able to be put in here or something like that, I mean-
They're pretty good, actually.
Yeah, there's better ways of doing certain buildings, so, I mean, to blanketly say, okay, you've got to have those windows on this first floor, again, if it's partial parking or, you know, half underground or whatever, I think there's better ways to handle that. And then, something that came in for me under building materials, and I don't know if, where, or if this is the proper place for it, but I haven't seen much towards incentivizing or getting towards green building type of things, like permeable surfaces, bio swales, I mean, is that going to come into the street design? But, I mean, as far as parking requirements, I mean, if we could have permeable parking areas as an incentive or something like that, is that something that we want to put in at this point? You know, that, I don't know where that goes, but that's something that I think is the direction we need to go, you know, and if it's, if we're doing all this stuff, you know, perhaps that's something that we want in design standards. If you're putting 500 square feet of parking lots down, let's make sure it's the right way. Same thing with, like, what we did in Walnut Street, as far as the vegetation, you know, between the streets and the, you know, let's make sure we're doing that right. And just, again, I don't know if there's ways to incentivize it, but on my building, at the pizzeria, our awning is photovoltaic, you know, so there's ways that you can, you know, whether we want to incentivize that or not, I don't know, but there's ways that we can make these buildings better and prettier, and also, better for the, better for the community as a whole, reaching other pillars of Envision Eugene, you know, rather than just how it looks, it works better as well. You know, the rainwater's coming through and not going into the storm system, it's going into the water tables.
That's a, that's a great point, and I just wanted to throw out that we have a green building program that works on addressing a lot of that, it's on a number of levels, and we've been having conversations about what can we do in the code to try to push that a little bit farther forward. So, it feels like something that is, question that we could kind of break off and chew on a little bit separately as well. Ethan Nelson, our green building, and guys, had a few conversations, it might be useful to bring in and have a conversation together about what that might look like.
I mean, because, you know, if you look at Willamette Street now, it's not a pretty street, but, you know, if there's, I also, you know, you look at cities where the streets are greener, as part of the infrastructure, you know, it can be a win-win.
I have Commissioner Baker in the queue, but I've not heard yet from Commissioner Mills. So, I didn't know if you had any comments, this would be Commissioner Baker's second comment.
I think, you know, I'm not, I'm not a design professional from the, from architectural standpoint, so I've been deferring to all the folks here that have a lot more knowledge about that, but it seems to me-
You are a user, though.
Huh? I am a user and I am a designer, but not of buildings usually. Usually, they're not as romantic or as aesthetic. But I guess what I'm hearing is a coming together of the need to talk about and resolve how we're going to utilize design review to help facilitate this whole process versus our past practice of clear and objective. So, I think there's a big, I say a big, a strategic conversation coming up about that and how much we believe in that and how much it's needed. So, that's the learning I've come away from this discussion, just listening to the other people at the table. So, with that, I'm just going to back away. I think a lot of, a lot of very good ideas have been put forth here from all of the commissioners except me, so I'm just going to have that. I do see some strategic, and I'm also very interested in the test drive results and comments from that, that'll also be something very interesting to hear from.
Okay. Before I go to Commissioner Baker, Robin, did you have-
Yeah, just a quick clarification, and I'm not assuming that you weren't thinking this already, but for anybody that's watching or listening, we do have to provide a clear and objective standard.
Yes.
And so, you know, we'll go down that road, the question is just, what does that alternative look like at this point?
But it has been, there has been a degree of controversy at this table for adjustments, the allowance of them, and so that's going to become a very animated discussion.
And I'll interrupt and just jump in, too, with the whole design review commission in Portland, that was only possible through bill in the legislature. And so, you know, I think there's, anyway, that's another issue. Commissioner Baker, I'll let you-
Yeah, no, I agree with Commissioner Randall, that's something we'd like to have, but it may not be on the table for, on the table for some time, and we're not, we don't have the clout that Portland does at the legislative level. I forgot to mention one thing, one other issue that I thought, and again, as much as we'd like to have design review, if we can't have it, we want to make sure there's enough flexibility in the code. So, on page one, the last drawing, again, we restricted the setback to only 50%. I could see, could see a situation where a developer, you know, a use wants to go in there and they want to have, you know, seating all the way across the front, or some street trees, you know, and so now, we're saying you can't really do that. I would, I don't have any problem with allowing someone to setback from zero to 15 feet. In other words, people that want to be right on the street can, and people that want to sort of try to provide more of an outdoor experience for their customers for whatever reason. And also, I mentioned this because we talk about increased bicycle use, and right now, we don't have any place for bicycle parking in this, in these, in these, these plans right now. I mean, we have some code requirements to provide it, but these are the kind of places where, you know, someone might have some landscaping or trees and a couple bicycle parking places, and so, it just seems to me that we shouldn't restrict, wouldn't require them if, you know, a design team, a building owner, or whatever, developer want to come in and they have a building where they want to propose where it's not right on the street, because, again, we only have a 10-foot right-of-way, and they want to have a, you know, like across the street, you know, with the new build, the Woolworth Building, you know, he wanted to provide a little bit, I mean, he went to the trouble to provide a planter in the back because they, you know, he wanted to provide a little bit of flowers or whatever. So, if they wanted to do that, we should give them the flexibility right up front to do that.
Yeah.
Yeah, a quick response to that, that's a, that's a really good observation, and I believe that the downtown riverfront and even Walnut Station, they'll allow greater, more of the building facade to be set back if that area is used for certain pedestrian types of uses.
Absolutely.
Like, you couldn't set it back just to do landscaping or something-
Right.
-long. Yeah. And the intent would be to carry that, that ability forward in this code.
Commissioner Taylor?
Yeah, I just wanted to say I agree with Commissioner Baker, and I also wanted to say, Chris Village actually has some really nice examples of kind of pushing the limits of revocable permit and using public right-of-way. For instance, if they extend their setback and provide pedestrian amenities within their 0 to 15 setback, and they want to provide bike parking on the sidewalk, for instance, then they get a revocable permit. But I think because of what the environment you're trying to create, or we're trying to create on Willamette Street, I think really looking closely at options and opportunities for revocable permits and how that public right-of-way could potentially play a role in the design of the. The other thing that you, that I've forgotten, that you brought up, I've forgotten, so.
I don't think this is our last opportunity-
No.
-at this. In fact, that's a good segue, I think, into, I know, Robin, you had some of the public engagement plan outline in our AIS and what some of those next steps are. Do you have enough information from us at this point to move forward? Do we need to formalize anything on what we talked about today? I know we've had discussions and kind of strop holes and votes and that before, but I'm, it's sounding like maybe you may have enough to move forward with what we've talked about today.
I'm going to say that after one more conversation with planning commission, I, we will. So, I've heard a number of things kind of thrown out on the table today that I would want to get a little more clarity about so that what we're sharing with the public is something that's at least closer to what I'm hearing from you all. But I think we're darn close. I feel like what we're looking for in reviewing the conceptual standards are showstoppers, right? You know, big sort of deal-killing concerns and-
And I don't get the sense that there were any showstoppers.
Yeah, I'm not hearing any. It's more like, you know, we're, we're fine-tuning these concepts to get them where we need them to go, and given that there are a few things that we haven't talked about yet, design review, street design, and the single-family option, sub-district being really the main I, I would like to hear what commission has to say about those. Maybe at the next meeting, we could follow up on a couple of things from, from this conversation and also introduce enough about those, those topics, probably not design review yet, because that's, I think that can exist a little bit outside the public conversation, because if, if we get the clear and objective standards right and we know we're going to have some kind of an alternative process, we can separate that out just a little bit and work on it. I want to make sure that we get the clear and objectives standards right, so-
Sure.
If that sounds good, that, that would be a suggested agenda for the next, for the next meeting.
And is that Carolyn?
Well, that's a good segue to when is the next meeting? July 21st. It's questionable whether or not we will have a quorum. I think Randall, Taylor, and Baker are all scheduled out.
No, actually, I'm here.
Oh, you are here?
Yes. My vacation got rescheduled for August.
Okay.
I got that to Amy, but I don't think it's made it into the, up yet.
Okay. Well, then, um-
But I know next week-
Then we will have a quorum.
Commissioner Dvorsky may not be here.
That was the big question, is we didn't know if he was going to make it, but with you being able to attend, we will, either way, we'll have a quorum.
Okay.
So, shall we go for it?
I think we should.
Okay. All right, we will be meeting next Monday.
On this?
Yes.
Now, there was, there was an agenda item already on the agenda for next Monday, though, right?
It's the South Willamette Design Code.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. It had been employment and public lands expansion update, but that got bumped to August.
Okay.
The one thing I wanted to say that I remembered is design review. Design review doesn't have to be necessarily legislative, as you know. I mean, there are other jurisdictions that use design review similar to a site review, just similar to the Willamette or the Walnut Mixed Use Station. So, know that it doesn't have to have a review board. It can, yeah, so there are options. It's just the title of it and how it's approached, as you know.
Correct.
Yep. Commissioner Borowski?
And for me on this, it, I think that maybe a, I, I don't want to do another meeting, but after we hear what the, the architects say, I think that, you know, that may inform us a lot more to come back and say, oh, yeah, I think there's going to be some, oh, yeah moments after that. I hope so. I hope there are going to be some that we've come back and say-
I think the test drive is an important thing.
Yeah, so I don't know where that discussion gets brought to you guys, if it's, if it's all in that meeting or if that will be enough. So, that's just my feelings on it.
Okay. All right. So, with that, then, are there other items from staff?
Just an update on where we are with some of the work that you've seen. The residential redesignation package went to the city council last week, and they voted 8-0 to approve it. I will let you know that the, the Rest Haven, Willamette Street Cemetery site was not included. That property owner actually withdrew before it went to council. So, there were, the three sites, Crow Road, Gillum Road, and the Irving Road Eagles. The Board of Commissioners needs to act as well. We brought it to them last week. They wanted a little bit more information from E-Web, which we are providing to them, and we're scheduled again on July 22nd. And if they approve it, then we're done with that residential redesignation package. And then the only other efficiency measure we're still tracking through is the single-family code amendments. We have a work session at tonight's council meeting, that's at 7:30. We had originally proposed action. There's been some, some new proposals around how to allow some flag lots to have, allow for secondary dwelling units, so we need a little more time to work through that here, here if council even wants us to do that. And so, now we are scheduled for action on July 28th. So, we're, we're making progress on all of them, and we're still meeting our deadline, hopefully, of getting action on all those before council break.
Which is the month of August?
Which is basically the month of August, correct.
All right. Other items from commission? I think I have a question. Do we have a date yet for Commissioner Belcher's, oh?
We do.
RT?
We do. And I probably won't find it quickly here, but I will ask Amy to send you out a save the date.
Yeah, you can send us out.
Yeah. It's in, it's in mid-August.
Okay.
So, it's a little ways out still.
Okay. Sounds good. All right. Well, with that, for adjournment.